Okay, good evening everyone. And welcome to the first of what will be many county transition information and public comment forums. My name is Randell McShepern. I am a citizen of Cuyahoga County. I live in Beechwood, Ohio, and I work for a company called RPM International Incorporated in Medina, not so far from here. I'm delighted to welcome you and I first of all want to thank the tremendous staff here at Tri-C West that have just gone out of their way to be as accommodating as we could have ever imagined. I would like to, before I start the formal comments, acknowledge those members of the Public Engagement Committee that are in the audience tonight. And if you all could stand and be recognized, we have Andrew Whitehead, Gary Katz, Jonathan James, Adam Harvey, Dr. Rutney from Cleveland State, and our most capable assistant, Debbie Dow, who works for the county but keeps us all in line. I also would like to acknowledge the two wonderful ladies providing interpretation services for us tonight. DeWanna Crawford, who is standing here with us, and seated in front of her is Jennifer Carrick. So thank you both for being here. So we now have the agenda for tonight, and there's a couple of housekeeping items that I'd like to cover before we get into the granular details. First of all, on your chairs, please find the feedback form. We think it's very important that we, as the Public Engagement Committee, understand how well we are faring as it relates to hosting these meetings and making sure that we're serving your interests as best that we can. So I would ask, if some of you that might have to leave early, please be sure to drop your form in one of the boxes in the back. There are two boxes, there are two boxes on the two tables. One is purple and the other is white. And I think, I think there is actual signage on those that reads "exit survey," so please feel free to complete that. Also, in terms of restrooms, directly behind me, I know there are women's restrooms, and I'm told that right above them on the second floor are men's restrooms. So, that's right, the men can use a little more exercise. So with that, we will jump right into the presentation. Again, the agenda for tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about the purpose of the public forums, why we're doing these, and what we hope to accomplish. The Public Engagement Work Group charge and the status update. Again, I'm the chair, co-chair of the Public Engagement Work Group, and we will share with you what we've been doing, more of a status report. Then we will ask the three individuals to my left to pretty much do the same, to talk about the county council planning, work group, the current status of their activities, and maybe review of their charge as well. And then we want to open it up and ask you all to offer any questions, comments, suggestions, concerns, whatever the case may be. I will briefly review the ground rules for that when we reach that portion. And at the conclusion of that, I think we'll all be free to go. So one last point I'll make is that the plan as it relates to these public forums is that for the next several, three to four months, every three weeks, we will have forums such as this to educate and engage the public. Every time we present a forum, there will be different work groups, because there are many different work groups involved in this process. So if you continue to watch the county website, you can learn what the other committees or work groups that you have an interest in are presenting, and we welcome you to come back. And just like tonight, feel free to engage in questions and any other comments and so forth. And the last thing I'll say about that is, we are trying to spread this throughout the geography of Cuyahoga County, so we'll be as far west as Westlake, as far east as Morrisville Heights, and we're going to be south in Broadview and downtown Cleveland and everywhere in between. So please follow the calendar for that. So this next slide is something that we refer to when we do our public forums often, and it simply states that this is one of the grandest civic education projects in any of our lifetimes. It's not very often that you reform your government, especially at the county level. So we are excited about this process. We are hopeful that based on the wonderful feedback and input that we will get from hosting sessions like this, that we will be much smarter in our decision-making, and hopefully that will lead to a much more productive county government starting 2011. And I guess the moral of the story here is that all citizens should weigh in. This grand process isn't just for those of us that are on committees or work groups, but it's for all citizens. So the next slide kind of speaks to the somewhat daunting challenge, I guess is the word I would use, that we face in terms of pulling all of this together. And simply what I mean by that is, as you can see, there are many committees and many individuals that are heading those committees. Starting with the three names at the top, James McCafferty, Gary Holland, and Joseph Nani. Joseph Nani is sitting right here in the front. The charter called for three senior county officials to lead the transition advisory group. And underneath them comes the executive committee and all the various work groups. And as I stated, Public Engagement, you see the first bubble on the left there, and then the council planning is in the lower level, second from the right. And so the two of us will be presented. But it is a very intense but exciting process, and there are many committees meeting through the end of April. We had over 109 public meetings that had already taken place, because each of these committees are meeting on a regular basis, and each of these committees have subgroups that are meeting on a regular basis. So there is much to do, and we're excited about all the work that has been done to date and the work that will be done in the coming months. So the purpose of this forum is quite simple. Three simple bullets that you see here. First and foremost, we want to inform the community about the status of the county transition process, again, to bring you up to speed with where we are today. We want to engage the public in listing their assistance and promoting public awareness and involvement. So again, if you really want to drive home how important it is that we're all involved. And then thirdly, we want to take back your recommendations to the respective work groups so that those work groups can incorporate your ideas and your input into their ongoing work. So that's, in a nutshell, what tonight's event is all about. I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes, I'm not going to read all of this in detail, but we thought it would be helpful to revisit the charge of our work groups. And the Public Engagement Work Group, somewhat self-explanatory, but just to touch on a few of the things that we had in mind from the very beginning for this work room. We want to devise strategies for outreach that ensure that every citizen of Cuyahoga County has access to relevant information. And along those lines, we also want to identify some of the necessary communication tools to ensure that the public is well-informed. So what do we mean by that? That could be everything from the fact that the county is videotaping this session right now, and that videotape will be available on the county website, so those that couldn't be with us tonight that would like to see what we're doing will have that opportunity. We are also keeping the public informed by way of website. I think the county has done a fantastic job with the website. It's easy to follow and maneuver, and just about anything you can look for is there. So I would encourage you to visit that. And then there's everything from Facebook to press releases, to local media, to face-to-face kind of interaction with public individuals and groups, and everything in between. So we really are working hard at exhausting any and all communication tools. Thirdly, our charge is to direct volunteers, media, and other interested parties to each committee as appropriate. I do have a highlight that I'm very proud to report, that among other things, our work group has made close to 500 phone calls. We actually went into phone bank mode to make sure that those that had signed up to be volunteers that had not yet been contacted were followed up with by way of phone. For some, it seems old-school, Sister Joanne, if you will, but I still think it was one of the most effective things that we've done, because people were very excited to hear from us and to know that we were very concerned and eager to see them, you know, participate in the process. So I really want to thank my committee and many of them that stood for the time and energy that they put into that process. Continuing on with just three more bullets, we want to communicate the desired outcome for county reform, and that's one of the things that the county council planning group kind of talked about, that, you know, we want to kind of talk a little bit about where we are today and then where we think this can lead as these changes take place. So we think that's important. We want to provide feedback to the process and ensure that the process is in fact inclusive, transparent, and comprehensive. And finally, we want to evaluate the effectiveness of this effort, and that's partly why, as I referenced earlier, we do have the exit forms that we would ask you again to complete. And also, there's a strategy that we are already talking about regarding longer-term public engagement, and I'll get to that in just a second. So the Public Engagement Work Group has really focused on three primary areas, if you will. And as a result, we've divided it into three sub-work groups, we're calling them. The first one is the Logistics Public Forum Work Group, and that's the group that planned today's forum. That's the group that has planned a list of several other forums that I will share with you on the next slide. And that's the committee or work group that will also provide support to all the other work groups and committees that have an interest in having public meetings and forums, might need help with finding facilities, meeting logistics, et cetera. Of course, when you're holding public meetings and you want to be open and inclusive, you have to do things like be mindful of where you hold meetings. We were looking at a venue, just as an example, for our next forum that was, seemed to be ideal, but we learned that there was not full accessibility for wheelchair users. So we had to take that particular facility off the list. We tried to find facilities that are on public bus lines. We've tried to be as open as possible about even time of day, a day of week that we hold forums. So there's a lot of work that goes into logistics and planning these various meetings. The second sub-work group is the Public Outreach Work Group. There's really, I would call it outward-facing, really trying to figure out who or how do we reach the many, many different stakeholder groups that are throughout the county. So you all can probably think of some of these off the top of your head, but we have a student stakeholder group, we have elected officials, we have businesses, we have universities, we have churches and synagogues and temples. We have, I mean, we can go on and on, but we're really thinking long and hard about who are all of the different groups that we need to reach, and how do we begin to reach out to them and encourage them to participate in this process and invite them to forums like this. So that group has done good work, and we're excited about that. And then third, and certainly not least, we're calling it the Post-2010 Engagement Work Group. And this group is actually focused on really looking at, should the process of public engagement continue beyond 2010? We believe that it shouldn't necessarily be something that would go away when our work is done, but that the public should be, as a part of this new government structure, continually involved and always have a door open in terms of being able to sit down with elected officials, to share their concerns, to offer feedback, whatever the case may be. So that group is already talking about perhaps the creation of an office of public engagement, which we think is quite interesting. So stay tuned, and as that group continues to work, we will flesh more of that out. So this next slide is very important, and of course, can be found again on the county website, and as well as in, I think the Land Dealer is listing all of our events. But as you see, and as I alluded, we are having these types of forums, again, with the various work groups presented in various regions throughout Cuyahoga County. And there are a few that are listed as tentative. The one most important, and I guess I should note, is the May 25th. We do know that Notre Dame College will not work, but we are right now in pretty serious discussions with their next-door neighbor, Regina High School. So we think we can still pretty much cover the same geography, but it might have to be a different location. And my good friend Jonathan James is on the job, and we'll probably know by tomorrow for sure, and that will be updated on the website. But we would encourage you to come to as many of these as your schedule would allow to, again, ask questions. Going back to my previous slide, as you can see, there's so many work groups working on so many important things, from the HR work group to the Human Services Work Group to boards and commissions, to the Council Planning Room, you know, and several others. And we want the public to know what they're doing, to ask questions, to give input. So please, by all means, plan on attending as many of these as you can. The last thing I'll say about this slide is that we also felt that it was important, after consulting with some of our leaders in the Hispanic-Latino community, to have a forum in their community, in the heart of their community, where we would actually have individuals that could provide the presentation in both English and Spanish. So we are working with the Hispanic Roundtable and others to plan that forum sometime in the month of August. Date and location to be determined. So again, all of you would be welcome to that event as well, but again, trying to do all that we can to be as inclusive as possible. And I will say again to those of you that have come in since I first started speaking that on your chairs, there are forum feedback forums. We would ask that you complete those, and if you have to leave early, there are two boxes in the rear of the room. One is purple, and one is white. Simply drop that form in the box. It is very helpful to us in terms of giving us the feedback that we need to make sure that we're making these various workshops and forums as interesting as possible and helpful as possible. So we certainly will have time for Q and A at the end of the session, but at this point, I will transition PowerPoints and ask the County Council Planning Work Group to come forth and to give you their update. So with that, I think Sister Joanne is going to come up first. Here we are. Thank you.
Good evening. As Randy called me Sister Joanne, I am Ursula and Sister, I go by Sister Joanne or Joanne Gross. I, along with Tim Reynolds and Jean Smitzer, co-chair the County Council Planning Work Group. And we, we have been working diligently since the end of January. It feels like forever. One of the things that we wanted to do tonight was to give you, in preparation for talking about what our charge is, we thought we'd give you a little bit about the background of what we're looking at. And we think it's important that people understand how the county works now. And it may sound simplistic, but right now, what we have is this three-person Board of County Commissioners elected countywide. And they do basically everything. They pass resolutions and approve budgets. They approve all contracts and amendments. They approve every purchase over $1,000 in the county. They approve leases and sales of property, all travel, staff development, et cetera. In the year 2009, and we know this because Jean Smitzer here is the clerk of the board, so she knows exactly how many items and resolutions are on, go in front of the commissioner in any year. But in 2009, there were 3,158 resolutions passed. Of those, 1,700-some were contracts, were amendments to contracts in 2009, just to, so that you understand the scope of what the commissioners do and approve. The commissioners are required by the Ohio revised code to meet 50 times a year. So that's how the county, the Board of County Commissioners works now. We also have these separately elected officials. We have the three county commissioners, the auditor, the clerk of courts, the coroner, the engineer, the recorder, the prosecutor, the sheriff, and the treasurer, all independently elected officials. They have separate, they now have separate hiring and personnel practices, separate compensation scales, and they have budgetary control over their offices. So that's what we operate under now. As of January 1st of 2011, we will have one county executive, an 11-person county council elected by district, we will have an elected prosecutor, and we will have appointed officials in the offices of clerks of courts, the fiscal office, which is combining the auditor, recorder, and parts of the treasurer function, and parts of the clerk of courts function. We will have a medical examiner, who is, that's the official title of the old coroner office. We'll have a director of public works, a sheriff, and a treasurer. And the charter describes the duties and powers of those, both those elected officials and some of those appointed officials, in very general terms. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim to explain to you what our job is as council planning.
Okay, well, first, before I get started, is there anybody here who is or is contemplating running for council? Good, that's great. Our job, in a nutshell, is to, when you win your election, and you take a deep breath and you say, "What now?", we hope that you'll turn to a set of recommendations that we have, and you can get it, at least we'll give you a way to think about where you're going to go next, because it's not really defined in the charter, in terms of what are the day-to-day processes and systems and resources available to use council people to do what it is that you're going to do. In fact, in many ways, it's not particularly well-defined what it will be that you do. So our job is to research and recommend to the elected officials council operating rules and procedures, a contract approvals process that currently now is going through the commissioners. And I should say that those three commissioners make all of those decisions at that level of detail, every expenditure over $1,000, for an organization that has a budget that's well over a billion dollars. So it's a real fire hose, and those of you that are going to be elected will have to come to terms with. We'll also provide recommendations for how to staff the council and how to organize that staff. And we felt that it would be useful to the newly-elected officials, that when they come together in their first meeting, they really need to have a to-do list. There are a series of things that legally and organizationally they really must do in order to keep the county working as they organize, and decisions that they must make in order to organize the council and how it will be doing its work. So we'll provide our recommendation for what agenda items should occur in that organization when needed. There are a number of issues that we have to address in order to make these recommendations, and many of them are things that will probably evolve and change over time. And so in some ways, what we are doing is helping you at least get started and to give you, give you a starting point when you're elected. What is the role of the county executive versus the council? The balance of power is spelled out to some degree in the charter, but that's something that is going to evolve in how decisions get made, and what processes are used to make those decisions are not spelled out in detail in the charter. What is the council's legislative authority? We had, we ourselves had a public forum, I think, two weeks ago, right? Where, at Cuyahoga Community College downtown. Center for Families and Children.
Another C U.
Yeah, it's one of those. And the topic of that particular public forum was to discuss and get input from the public on what the role of a county council should be. There are real questions there. It's probably not necessary, for example, for the county council to enact laws that duplicate laws that are already being taken care of, either at the state level or at the municipal level. The county council clearly has budget authority and is responsible for the budget, but in doing so interacts with the county executive. How contracts get processed and how approval authority is delegated is a very key issue. To the extent that the council has legislative responsibilities and a need to legislate, handling those 1,700 contracts could become quite cumbersome. And one of the things that I think we all want to be able to do is make sure that that contracting process is efficient and transparent and effective, and that contracts are approved in a timely fashion so that the work of the county can proceed. Constituency services. All of the council people will be elected from districts, and elected officials are answerable to their voters and the people in their constituencies, and it's clear that there will, you will get phone calls, and how do you deal with that? So our job is to begin the process, to begin to think and help you begin to think about what are the processes and resources that are required for the county council to effectively do its job. And we've broken that down into four areas. In fact, there will be some work, there are some work groups working in each of these areas. One is to develop a, all legislative bodies have rules and procedures that they operate by. Typically, these rules and procedures are agreed to at the beginning of each new legislative But you need a starting point. So how is the council organized? The charter, for example, I believe mandates that there'll be a president of the council. That will need to be elected. That's one of the things that needs to happen on the first organizational meeting. There are other officers of the council, and what is the process of electing them? These are set out typically in the rules and procedures. What committees will the council have? Probably should be a finance committee, for example, but what other committees? And here, we've looked, and in all of these issues, we've looked to other county councils and other legislative bodies to try and get a sense of what best practices are and what the options are. And we all began to make a recommendation that's appropriate for the scope of work that Cuyahoga County has. Some mundane things, like notice of meetings, frequency of meetings, and what, how a typical meeting is conducted, when and how the council will go into executive session. Some of these things are essentially determined by the Ohio revised code, but not all of them, and the council will have great leeway in determining how it orders its business. The contract approval process is a key part of the work that needs to be done, and our responsibilities are shared between the executive and the council. The council has a very important role in it. As I said earlier, we need to work on processes that provide a timely approval, assuring adequate review, where ethical, transparent, and efficient purchasing processes is enabled. One of the things we're considering, for example, many other bodies with this sort of responsibility, appoint a separate Board of Control, perhaps you could think of it as a committee of the Council, that does the day-to-day work, typically meets more frequently than the Council would, and then, and provides an approval process that then filters up in a more general way to the Council, freeing up the Council's time for perhaps broader issues. Joanne, if you'd like, would you like to expand a little? I think it'd be beneficial if we heard about, a little bit about how that process happens now, and then we'll move on.
Good evening. Currently, the Board of County Commissioners has a lot of help in making sure that the contracts and agreements and amendments that come before them are in good order and ready for their consideration and approval at the board meetings. All contracts are through the Purchasing Department. If a department needs to purchase services or goods, if they're over $1,000 but under $25,000, they have to have free quotes for those services, and then they can do a contract based on that. If they're over $25,000, currently, the departments have to do what we call a request for proposals, and to see what services or what providers are out there that are available to provide the services at the lowest cost and to meet the needs of the departments. The current, or the County Administrator can currently execute all contracts that are approved by the Board that are $1 million or less. Anything that's greater than that, then the Board President executes those. But the key here is that all of them are approved by the Board of County Commissioners currently. We have an automated agenda management system that we utilize, and when I say that there is a lot of help in making sure that all these processes are being taken care of, and that everything is fine to go before the Board, the contracts are receiving approvals through various departments. That would be the Office of Procurement and Diversity, to make sure that all of those rules and policies are followed. Approvals that the departments have the budgeting, or the funds in their department budget to pay for those goods and services. Also, we have to make sure that the County Auditor signs that the certification of funds are available for those contracts and services, and the Prosecutor's Office reviews them for their legal form and correctness, and then ultimately, Clerk of the Board's Office has the final approval to put those items on the agenda for the Board's approval. They're also scrutinized, all the agenda items are scrutinized on a weekly basis by an administrative group, and if there's any questions or any doubts or any additional information that's needed by anyone, the items will either be held tabled, questions will be answered, the Commissioners may have a question that we answer. So we try and get as much information as we can, so that the Board can make a considered judgment on whether or not to approve those items at their weekly meetings. So, if you have any other questions about that, I'd be more than happy to answer them once we're finished with our presentation.
Moving on, then, one of the things we want to talk about, and have formed a workgroup, will be soon forming a workgroup, to deal with, is the staffing level and organization of the staff that serves the council people. The Clerk of Council is mandated by the Charter, but it's likely that our council people will need additional staff support, drafting legislation, constituency services, and providing overall expertise in the operations of the counties as required. And then finally, as I mentioned, a to-do list for their first meeting or first couple of meetings, to help them figure out how to organize the council, to maintain current county operations under legal authority, and to establish and get the contract process, keep the contracting process moving. Finally, I'd like to, this is my last slide, I'm sure you're all delighted to hear. One of the things that's very important to emphasize is that this workgroup, indeed all of the workgroups that are associated with transition process, are not decision-making bodies. In fact, the elected officials will be making the decisions. Ultimately, of course, the voters will decide how well and whether the proper decisions were made. Our job, as we see it in our work, is to research best practices, identify how other people in similar situations are tackling these issues, identify the options available to the council people, and craft and offer recommendations that are appropriate to the needs and the scope of the operations of Kiowa County. We're not simply cutting and pasting from everybody else's rules and procedures, for example. We really need to take into account what Kiowa County requires. And as important as anything else, is we're working in a very open, very transparent, and very public process. All of our meetings are public, all our meetings are noticed on the website, minutes from each of our meetings are also posted on the website. We participate in this sort of public forum, and indeed, our workgroup has, and I think is likely to have, additional public forums as well. So with that, I think we're ready to turn it over for questions, for any and all.
I'm going to get cut back up here. So, we, at this point, would like to move into the discussion phase of our forum, and before doing so, we wanted to touch a bit on the ground rules. We would ask that any of you that want to make a comment, come forth to the microphone so that not only we can hear you, but the videotape can pick you up as well. We're asking for a two-minute limit per person, to ensure that we hear from all of you that have an interest in speaking. We also ask that everyone have an opportunity to speak before anyone takes a second turn. We're asking that you focus your comments or questions on comments for the Public Engagement and County Council Planning Work Groups. As I stated earlier, there will be other opportunities to have more detailed discussions about the work of other workgroups, but we would rather have you pick our brains, since this is our area of focus and expertise. And finally, watch for the timekeeper. I do believe that that's Dr. Rutger here, who will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to keep things moving. Also, Mr. Shanes, if you would, if any of you would like to write a question, not everyone likes to get in front of the microphone, please feel free to raise your hands, and we'll pick those up and read the questions from the podium. So, I do believe that is it for the ground rules. Would any of you care to offer comments, thoughts, questions? And you can just line right up there. Thank you, sir.
Lynda Aberco. I'm a little cynical about council. After reading what some of the candidates have said in the paper, that they want to expand what the Charter specifies, a couple of questions. Who interprets the Charter if you have a difference of opinion? For example, council members will be entitled to reimbursement for reasonable and necessary expenses. Who defines that? My second question is, talking about constituency phone calls, what kind of a call load do they have now, the Commissioners, and who handles it? And is there reason to expect anything additional to what they're getting?
The first question had to do with your cynicism about the expanding the Charter. You know, this is, I don't have an answer to that question. This is going to be a work in progress. Interpretations of the Charter will eventually, if there are legal questions, they will likely be interpreted by either the Prosecutor or the Law Director. Or the Courts, if they get that. There are expansions, there are interpretations that various council people, potential council candidates are saying their view of certain things. I mean, all that's going to be worked out, and I think they've got to be worked out as a body, you know, once the council gets together. So, I'm sure that's not a satisfying answer for someone who's concerned about it right now, but...
I guess what I'd add is that this is a political environment, it's a political organization, and I don't mean that in a pejorative sense. And so, to the extent that there are attempts to expand powers by one part of the organization or another, I think that's frankly to be expected, and there may well be, as there are in most political bodies, an ebb and flow between, say, the County Executive and the Council, and really, the great decider is the voter. One of the things that, just if I can speak personally, that I've been again and again impressed with, is as we've gone through this process, and as I've learned what the county does and how it does it, how important it is for you to elect good people into these offices, people that are upstanding and capable. And so, ultimately, the responsibility is on the voters to ensure that that happens. It's forums like this, as we begin to reform the county, that form the nucleus of active involved voters, and it's, I think, one of the great benefits of having an open process like this in transition. You have a second question of...
On the call.
Of the call.
I'll try and answer that. Each one of the Commissioners has a scheduler and two staff who work on whatever is the work of the day for the Commissioners. I do know that, I could not tell you what their call load is specifically, but I do know that they are on the phone constantly, working with, you know, whomever, and, you know, I'm sure the load is great, but I do know that, we've discussed this as far as staffing, is that the new Council should have staff that will work for the order of the entire Council, and so, you know, we're not looking to, you know, have each Council person have a person to work on the constituency services, so that's kind of where we're at.
The other thing that I'm aware of right now is that for most of the, for the departments that do direct service to constituents, for instance, Employment and Family Services, Children and Family Services, they do have internal customer service, not really departments, but they have someone who handles those kinds of constituency calls, and we would expect that that would continue in this new regime.
I just wanted to add, before the next gentleman off his comments, that Tim raised a very important point about how critical it is that we hire, that we elect good people to these positions, and that reminded me that Dennis Anderson and his colleague are in the back, representing the Kiowa County Board of Elections, and they have a table there with all the materials that you might need about registering to vote, and absentee voter information, and what have you. So please also stop by their desk if you need to before we leave. Please.
Hi, I'm Kevin Moran. Two parts, two questions, please. One is, I've been putting in a lot of time with enough other really great people to self-immiting for the Board of Division, and we're in the process of finally applying our recommendations, finalizing, and, you know, one of them was going to be to establish performance measures and other metrics, and if somebody asked about the call loads, we'd easily drop it up immediately and tell people what those would be. And we understand, this is an advisory group, and there's no compulsion by any means for any elected officials to actually take our recommendations into account. But, we're going to find out, you know, if they don't take the recommendations into account, why not? You know, I'd just like to see some comment, one way or another, about all the recommendations that, you know, was taken into consideration, and, you know, as a post-bowl, or you think this is the out recommendation, whatever. Could, I don't know how we get, you know, Miami to force that after elected officials, but I'd like to see a thorough brush of that.
I haven't thought about that, but then I'm going to also ask Tim to respond. And that's simply to say, first of all, two things. As a member of the voting public, you can always continue to challenge, and we all should, those that are elected to office, and all of this will be public record, so you'll have the recommendations that come from this committee and all the others, and feel free to approach those individuals and ask, "Why didn't you accept or, you know, follow these recommendations?". Secondly, the Executive Committee was selected with the thought that there would be some senior civic leadership that would be in a position to also hold the County Council and the County Executive accountable, and to at least, again, encourage them to follow closely the many excellent recommendations that are surely to come from the various committees. So you have not only myself on the Executive Committee, but everyone from Mayor Jackson, Sandy Cutler, CEO of Eaton Corporation, to Jerry Sutford, the president of this fine institution, and several others that will be also making sure that these recommendations are taken seriously. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tim for other comments.
The only thing I'd add is that, you know, we do have a free press, and it's getting freer all the time, bloggers and everything else, and these recommendations are going to be public, and the press does have a real role, and there is skeptical, hopefully there is as skeptical and cynical as some of us may be, and there will be an accounting. I'm pretty confident of that. Did you...
Good evening. My name is Ray Rosenberger. Thank you, and thank you for the excellent forum. I have three questions. Of course, I'm not certain they're in your area. My first question is, in your recommendations or study, are you going to recommend that the Council keep verbatim hard copied minutes? That's the first question. The second question, and it sort of dovetails with this gentleman just came before me, the process of picking the President of the Council, I've attended some sessions where that happens, not only at Council but other governmental bodies, and someone will make a motion, someone will second it, and the person gets elected President. My question is, will the entire process of selecting the President be transparent? That is, the discussions that lead up to the actual voting to select the President? I hope I phrased that. So those were my questions.
In terms of the Council, do you want to, maybe Jean can explain what we do now, so you can have a sense of what might proceed into the future?
I'm hoping that it will. Currently, we have digital recordings of all the Board of County Commissioner meetings, and those are preserved forever, because we're required in our retention schedule to make sure that we maintain those. Previous to that, we've had electronic tape-recorded minutes, and we also, from those, actually take the agenda, and we just put together what the final vote was, and considered and adopted by unanimous vote, or considered and adopted by majority vote, and those are what we refer to as our Agenda Actions, which is just a very simplistic minutes, because we have digital recordings verbatim of the entire meeting, and we keep those on file. We can now even send them to someone who requests them via email, and so, it's a great system. We've had that for about a year and a half now.
So, my follow-up comment would be that, no, you're not going to recommend hard copied verbatim minutes?
No, I would not say that we would. No, I would not say that we would.
I would guess, you know, we haven't gotten to that level of detail, and I can imagine pros and cons on that. On the cons side is the expense of doing that. But, I appreciate that there's also a pro side to it as well. Your other question had to do with the transparency of electing the council president. I generally have one thing to say about that, is that these individuals are subject to the sunshine laws, and so any meeting of, I think, three of them is a public meeting. And to include daisy chain phone calls are essentially public meeting material, and so that is your greatest protection that's available in terms of a tool towards transparency. That being said, it is, it's a political environment, it's a, it's an election within a small group of people, and it's, and it's not clear to me that every single word said by every single person to any other individual will necessarily end up being public. I don't think the law protects you to that level.
Ray, the one thing I would add is simply that it's an important question because, if you read the Charter, and I know you have, that if anything happens with the county executive, that president moves into the county executive position. So, I would think that because the Public Engagement Committee is suggesting that we ensure that the process remains open, that whenever the discussion takes place around how they select the first president of council, that perhaps you should be in the room and ask the same kinds of questions. So thank you for that.
My name is Arne McNamara, and as a candidate for this office, I too have asked, as regards to what's going to happen with all of these discussions, and I too have read with great interest the new candidates who are coming out of the county and the votes that we sent, I think we should all have a lawyer for each one, I should have, I really felt, when I read that, that's a very nice idea, but I really don't think that they have the authority or the power to do that without the whole group's discussion on the voting. As far as who would be the president and the vice president, if I was elected to that office, I would assure, and after those offices into county council, I would want very much to have a lot of discussion on it, and I would really resent it if I came in as a council member and found it so bad that I ignored the deals were done, and I had no say-so over learning the credentials of everyone who was on the committee and having a big discussion about it, and then make the decisions. Because I know that we have some very politically connected people who are already planning to win this election, and hopefully that they won't come in as the derelict, and I would certainly ensure that there was an open discussion, very transparent, because I, if I was elected, would want that, and even if I'm not elected, I would want that.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question by way of index card that I could share, and hopefully there'll be more general questions from the group. Perhaps your group has discussed this, so I'll pass the microphone. But, the question simply reads, of the 88 counties in Ohio, which one, if any, has a similar government system?
As far as we know, we can say it together, Summit County is the only other charter county in Ohio, in Ohio.
We have looked at, I'm sorry, we've also looked at organization rules and procedures from Allegheny County in Pennsylvania, and the county around Milwaukee has a similar structure. But in terms of Ohio and those counties subject to the Ohio Revised Code, Summit County is the only specific county.
Good evening. My name is Don Skibbeal, and first of all, I'd like to thank both of the workgroups here for what they've done. I know that it is, it is a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. So, first of all, thank you for that service. But, now, in my sort of recollection of the Charter and the idea behind it, behind having the executive and the council, was that the executive was going to be a very powerful position that could be held a common good, and he would be responsible for doing things like making the contracts and doing those kinds of deals. Where on the other hand, on the other side of the legislative piece, which is the eleven-member council, the idea, I believe, is that that is sort of a citizens' council, a part-time council, that was hoped to be the balance between the strong executive and, to offer that, to offer that give and take. So, I'm glad to hear that, your further explanation that they aren't going to have individual staff, but I was a little alarmed when we were talking about sort of this...
Let me just interject, we're not probably going to recommend that they have individual staff.
Well, I'm saying I hope so, because I don't think that's envisioned in the whole spirit of that, and you would be sort of attacking the idea behind that charter, and none of this is really wishful. So, I think it's, I think the idea that it is a part-time, that's why it's $45,000, and that, you know, it approved the budget, but once that budget is approved, then it's up to the executive and his administration, or her administration, to do the deals, and if there's problems, then the voters have someone to come to. And finally, I just want to, 30 seconds is all I need, thank you very much. Finally, I just want to bring a message that Peter Lawson-John brought to the City Pub a few days ago, and asked what advice he would give to the executive and to the, and to the council. To the executive, it was, make sure you understand what county government does before you mess with it. And to the council, it was, you are 11 people elected from different districts, but don't get into, into defending your turf. You've got to act as a unified group with the council. Thank you.
I wanted to make a candid reference to the staffing issue. The Charter, and I do not have the language in front of me, but it specifically says that the council has to have a clerk of council, and the council shall decide what staff they need as a whole to allow them to do their jobs. My interpretation of that is that they're supposed to figure out a staff for everybody, not individually. There's also a separate section in the Charter that specifically says that no individual member of the council shall have independent budgetary authority or anything. Again, that's a, that's my, it's not the exact language of the Charter, but essentially, independent council people are not going to get a budget to spend in their district for things, which also hopefully will lead to a more county-wide view of things rather than a district-wide view of things.
My name's Tim Brusell. I'm a candidate for District 7 County Council, which includes downtown. My question is, to those who have read the Charter, did you read the line that says council is a co-equal branch of this government? You read that line? What does that mean to the county council planning group?
That's a very short sentence covering a very big topic, is I think what it means. And what I'd, what I'd said earlier, I think, is what I restate, that this is a political organization, there is set up within the Charter a balance of power. That balance of power will be determined over time by the political actors. And it really would not be possible for us to make specific recommendations at that level, because these things will be determined over time by how these two, how the two branches, if you will, interact in making decisions, and ultimately, how the voters respond to that interaction.
And on the co-equal, to sort of flesh that out a little bit, how many staff would the county executive have authority to hire and fire underneath this Charter?
I don't think we know the answer to that question. There's, there are certain appointed officials that the executive appoints with the approval of the council, and then I believe everybody else, except for those people who are hired by the council, by the council, are report to or hired under the executive.
So that would include basically every person who works for county governments?
I would think so.
What's that number today? It's about 8,000?
Joe, Joe Nanny can, 4,000 to 4,500 who work for the Board of County Commissioners and charter-impacted agencies.
And those 4,500 would ultimately answer to the county executive?
I would think so, because right now, right now, those of us who work in a department are answerable to the Board of County Commissioners, or for other charter-impacted agencies, they're responsible to their elected official.
And how many staff in the ballpark is the, is the planning group going to recommend that the council hire?
We are...
Someone less than 45.
Someone less than 45. But what, what would the number, I mean, what do you think? Is that going to be three? Is it going to be four? Is it going to be five?
We have no idea.
Okay, whatever that number is, do you think that, that would match up under any definition of a co-equal branch of government?
There are many ways to measure power. The numbers of staff in this particular case is, in my view, an inappropriate measure. And I'd suggest to you that if you looked at any other governmental organization that had different branches, that typically the executive has a very significant number of people ultimately recording up to them, whether it would be the president or the governor, in this case, the county exec.
Right, well, I'm just, my question...
So I think, while I appreciate the importance of your question in terms of how, how balanced power and what does co-equal mean, I would suggest to you that the power we're talking about here is more about decision-making and policymaking than it is about employment numbers.
Right. My, my next question is...
This will have to be your last question.
This is my last question. $45,000 a year is considered a part-time salary in the Charter. $45,000 a year is considered a part-time salary in this Charter. How many people in Cuyahoga County do you think would consider that a part-time salary?